Everyone. Again, the seating of locations, please stand.
I would just start our prayer. So. Father in heaven, please pray, pray for everyone here today. Lead us in making the correct decisions and the right decisions for our community and guide us into the ways that we can do that. Lord, thank you for the all, all the opportunity that we have, all the great things that this community has provided us and blessed us with over the years. And we just pray that you will guide us and lead us into the correct decision and may your blessing be over it. Whatever that decision is that our community makes in Jesus' name, pray.
Next will be the Pledge of Allegiance. As we begin, please note that our microphone is very sensitive and it will pick up all conversation in the room and down the hallway. To make sure that everyone here and on Zoom can hear what's said, we ask all cell phones be silenced. Any noisy children be taken outside and side conversations be limited. This hearing will be recorded and posted to our YouTube channel. The purpose of this hearing is for public comments about the proposed community's activity center and the city's intent to apply for $2.5 million of blueprint to build CDBG funds. We would hear comments and questions from those in favor, those opposed, and those taking a neutral position on this topic. Those on Zoom who wish to speak may follow the directions in the chat. In an effort to ensure we hear from everyone who wants to speak, we will call your name and you may approach the podium or unmute your microphone at that time. We request that you come to the podium, state your name and address and speak respectfully. Also, limit your comments to three minutes and a city attorney, Mr. Farrell, he'll be keeping the time for us for the three minutes and give you a reminder when your time is close to being up. Okay, so the public hearing is now open. I'll invite Mr. Atkins to come up and give us a brief brief information related to the topic on the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody showing up tonight. So we get this PowerPoint up on the screens for you. Like Mayor Jackson said, the public hearing tonight is for a application to the CDBG grant, the Blueprint to Build program. Program is a possible two and a half million dollar grant that can come out of it if you are first. Excellent. As we started this process about three years ago, our objectives have been the same. Support wellness of community. Provide high quality of life for residents, promote social connection through good facility. All these key points, I'm talking about building the facility here. It's a facility, we're talking about Razorfield. If you don't know Razorfield is, it is over by the Ford dealership. There's a property currently owned by the city. And that facility we're talking about has two pickleball courts, an elevated walking track, basketball, volleyball courts, basically two gyms. Indoor tot lot jungle gym for daycare purposes and for other little kids. A multi-purpose room with kitchenette, the multi-purpose room can hold about up to 128 people seating. And then another office locker room and ancillary spaces. For this facility, we're looking at three main funding sources. Grants, starting with the CDBG grant, if approved. And we targeted about three or four, correct me if I'm wrong. Three or four, maybe five possible other grants that we're looking at as possible options as well. Private donations, it'll be another big part where there's going to be a certain aspect that we have to raise privately. And then a big part of it, the main part of it is we're looking at USDA low interest loan. Which would then be repaid by initial 1% sales tax pending approval. But that is what we are looking at right now. While they reiterate that we're looking at a sales tax, not a property tax, two different things. We have really no interest in going to profit tax, right? We've said that from day one and we still stand strong with that and we really have no interest in that part of it. The next slide is our potential layout. This is the CDBG program layout. Everything set forward, and I'm sorry for the chat bar up there, but that blue square, it's kind of blocking it. Blocking the square, that is the dedicated pickleball courts. Where we're looking at right now, but with this program. Hutton Architects, they don't release the full architectural plans soon yet. That comes down the road after a couple more steps. So they basically have their blueprint and then we already discussed with them and CDBG about making some changes that fit to our community. Specifically that pickleball court and the walking trail, or walking tracks, we need other gyms. That's to make it kick bones. Another change we have made is where it says tot lot room, that was originally a fitness center. We do not agree with or do not want to interfere with the two fitness centers we have in town. We don't want to compete with them at all. So we thought that was a good spot for the tot lot gym. Instead, so they've been very cooperative and compassionate to meet our needs. The, the middle of it, where it has the locker rooms, Janus College Office, some of that may change a little bit too. As we kind of fine tune our details, so this is no, nowhere near the exact sketch, but now this is an early rendering right now, but it gives you a good idea of what we're looking at here with the, with the program. Scope of work. Like I said, we're in the design still a little bit, Hutton, who is partnering with the CDBB program. They bring the, your plan is 75% and then down the road, once you hire your own local architect to fit the building to where your facility, your site requires. So like I said, these are still early renderings, but a local architect will fit it to Razorfield site for our needs. Yeah, after tonight, the public hearing for special comments, after that, we then select architects to move forward with this. The two and a half million dollars does require 1.25 million dollar match for local money. We have to have that secured to continue to move on through their application process. And then the final app is due November 14th at the latest, but we're starting to hear that might be a little flexible potentially. But that's kind of the timeline there. We are in the process of already have communications with the USDA for that low interest loan application. And then like so for the revenue from a 1% sales tax, our deal will be repay that loan. Any sales tax vote, we're finalized that as an option would be on November 4th. Other fundraising, all the grants and the private donations, both are a huge, huge process or product of this program and our efforts. Without either one of them, it's still be pretty hard to finish with this project, with this facility. Well, next slide is another timeline showing where we're at with the fundraising, the design completion, so still an early stage of that. And then early next spring, hopefully we're to that point and then 26, we're still in construction phases. And then hopefully by 27, we're enjoying it facility. Yeah, for tonight, look for public support, public input, layer four. All public input is valuable and accepted and I'm really appreciative for everyone that's here tonight. You can kind of see through that too, the design, construction, the approval for the grants. Digital vote, all the approval for the USDA loan, still up and coming. Grants and donations, so. Is, gives you kind of a breakdown of what this $17 million is all looking for, looking at. It's not just one fee, one project. We're looking at different things that are involved in that 17 million. That we're discussing, grant administration, design services, conditions, and the actual construction itself. And then some other contingencies as well. So a lot goes into it, been a lot of late work so far. The next slide shows kind of how that breakdown is, you know, we're looking at the USDA loan for $10 million to be paid back by sales tax, 1%, 1% can generate anything from 10 to 12 million. To pay back those loans for not only construction, but also operations of the facility. It's still a big part of the rest of the, rest of the pie is the grants and private donations as well, so. And it was a benefactor benefiting, benefiting an impact team. We really tried apart from day one of all these talks is creating a space for the most people we can. Everywhere from, you've seen the tot lot from daycare kids, men ones, all the way up. As long as they're still active. I mean, it's a wide range and a multi-generational facility that can impact, have a positive impact on a majority of our citizens. That's what we want as a, as a community to make healthier availabilities. High quality of life and then social connections. I'm not just talking about kids playing basketball and games. Talking about folks coming in, having coffee, playing cards after school. Hangout areas for what kids come out of elementary school and the middle school. Remember their Razor pickleball, you know, majority junior played pickleball, seeing it. Wide range of ages, wide range of ages. So a lot of people coming together for different, different things. So we thought that was a real high proponent of, of anything we were attempting to do. Conclusion of it, I didn't say it earlier, but the building is roughly 35,000 square feet. It is roughly $17 million. Yeah, we're looking at three different main funding sources. And any input here tonight is pretty valuable and appreciated. So. Yeah, questions from commissioners, can I answer right now?
Before we start, did we get the speaker sheets up to Mayor Jackson already? Book in person and zoom.
We will begin, as the state knows, with the in favor speaker list and then we'll move to the opposed speaker list. Beginning with Lori Deal.
I will let everyone know when they have one minute left and then 30 seconds and then you're done.
Okay, I'll read back.
I'm Lori Deal. I live at 214 West Sixth Street. And as an avid pickleball player, one of the main reasons I believe we need a community center is simple. We don't have adequate indoor outdoor facilities to play. And ever since I started playing, the need for court, especially indoor ones, has been a constant topic of conversation in our community. Around three and a half years ago, a few of us pickleball guys were dreaming out loud about how nice it'd be to live in a 55 plus community. Like the ones in Arizona, and I've had the privilege to spending a week there. And after I visited there, I was sparked with an idea of why not creating something like that in Concordia? So from there, I started a group called Life After 55. For nearly three years now, our group has been growing and thriving. We host potlucks, barbecues, game nights, craft activities, theme parks, themed parties, and even ice cream socials. We do it all with the generous help of the Fellowship Christian Church, who lets us borrow their facility for our gathering. But as wonderful as that has been, it's only shown me more clearly how much we truly need a dedicated community center. Not just for our group, but for all ages in Concordia. A community center would give people of all generations a place to connect, to move, to, to create and belong. We'd have space for pickleball, volleyball, basketball, walking groups and fun group games. It would be a safe, accessible space year round, regardless of the weather. And one of my biggest motivations in, in starting my group, Life After 55, was my mom. She had recently become a widow and spent most of her time alone. And now she has our events and she loves them. She's made friends, she laughs again, and she's not alone. We have many single folks who now have a place to belong. I also have members who walk every day and would greatly benefit from an indoor walking track. This isn't just about activity, it's about connection. It's about giving people a reason to get out of the house, stay active, meet others, and feel part of something meaningful. I understand that some people didn't want to raise sales taxes to fund projects like a new school or a new hospital. Things we already had in place, even if they needed improvement. But a community center is different. It's something we don't have. It's something that would benefit everyone from children to seniors. This is kind of a project that transcends age, background, and income. We need to show how valuable a space like this would be in our entire community, for our entire community. It's just not fun. It's not just for fun, but physical and mental health, a connection and for quality of life. So yes, I started this journey with love of pickleball, but it's grown into something much bigger. A community center would be a gift to Concordia, a place where all ages could come together, grow stronger, and feel like they belong. Thank you.
Next, we have Bren Anderson, Case and Macklin.
I'm Backlin Brown from Five Lost Creek Glen, Concordia, Kansas.
I'm Case Richard from 1820 Crestview Drive. I think it, it's a great idea because we'll be able to play pickleball, basketball, anything really, and when it's bold and slowly.
I also think it'd be a great idea for pickleball, basketball, walking, and other stuff to work out and in any weather.
It would also be a great idea because, um, I know there's some routines, like our calve routines. We don't have space every time when we need to practice. It'd be nice to have some more gigs and stuff like that.
Next, we have Ted Collins.
I'm very proud to be associated with groups and individuals that are behind this project. I want to tell you a little bit of information about some time ago, as a kid in the 1950s. I would seek out opportunities to play basketball in a small shed behind the Marit Baron's Hotel. Now known as a pure water company. Or we would check all the doors on the Methodist church. The outside of the public library. To see if we might enter through an unlocked door. Sometimes I think they let the door unlocked so that we could play in the gym. Over the years, a number of groups and individuals have championed an indoor recreational space. Concordia has and has had excellent outdoor recreational facility. I emphasize the outdoor. It is a hope of many of us that a community indoor recreational facility will become a reality. Thank you.
Next on the list is Luke Miranda.
So a couple of years ago, well, I guess it's more than a couple of years ago now, probably three years ago. Lori approached me and I was working for the post office at the time and she came up to me and like, you know, you should check out the pickleball thing. So I was like, I was a tennis player, so I, I was like, okay, I'll go ahead and give it a shot. And it has just taken me on a fantastic journey of meeting new people and building really good relationships with everybody. And you know, that, this, that kind of our pickleball group, we get together twice a week and stuff. And, and it is kind of a struggle on the winter months to find a place to play or, you know, like with well, being in session is a little bit tough there, but beyond pickleball itself, I believe this is a great opportunity for our community to provide a wonderful service for everybody because I've traveled in my previous job to probably, I don't know, tons and tons of small western Kansas towns and small south, or south central Kansas towns. And a lot of them had these, you know, good sized community centers where like kids get, get together. They could have a safe place to play, that safe place to do sports and activities and stuff like that. And I, I always looked at those, those places and they were smaller towns than us. And I would look at them and be like, man, that'd just be so great to have something like that in our community. And here we are at this hearing right now, and this is a great opportunity for us to, you know, see this thing into fruition and provide a really good service for our community and now the generations to come as, you know, give, add to what is already so great about our community. So, thank you.
Next, we have Jordan Budrow.
Hi, I'm Jordan Budrow. Most of you might know me, but I'm a business owner here in this community. I'm supportive of the community center because it's not only going to be beneficial for our community and our kids and everything from far from beyond. But it's going to bring in a revenue into our community that, that I would greatly appreciate. You know, there's been some, some statistics over, over the last few months, just with our baseball field. Showing how many people, something like this can really bring into a community, thousands of people. Which my business with, and businesses greatly appreciate. So I'm very supportive of this community center, not only for financial reasons, right? But for my kids. I also have three kids in this community that love to do sports. Every day they are out and about doing sports. Something that they can do and benefit from greatly would be the indoor facility during the winter time. My kids need somewhere to go to play. Now, I guess that's really much I have to say. I appreciate it.
Last on the in favor list is Laura Watson.
I'm Laura Watson. I live at 123 West 12th Street and I'm going to talk really fast because those of you that know me know I can't even say hello in three minutes. So here's the deal, when they put in a pickleball, I'm not an athlete, never have been, but when they put in a pickleball, you know, court at, at the park. I live really close to the park and I was like, oh, I need to learn to play pickleball, be good exercise, be a lot of fun. But what I found out was it's hard to find a day that's not 35 degrees or 98 degrees or the wind isn't going 100 miles an hour. And when it's really nice, then the pickleball court people are on it. So I never have learned to play pickleball and my first point is I want to learn to play pickleball. And I know Denise will play pickleball with me. So, okay. My second point is this, I'm on the library board and I know because I'm on the library board that people, that we need a place, small places for people in the community, meeting places where you can, where you can have small events or whatever for the community. Because people call the library and want to use the Frank Carlson room, which you can use if the library's not using it, but only during library hours. So they turn people down all the time. So we need, we need that in our, our community. The next one was, and I didn't think about this till I got here and I thought to Lori, but okay, she said there was an outdoor space where you could have farmer's market. Is that correct? Okay, I live two houses from the farmer's market.
Do those opposed to farmer's market?
Okay, I love farmer's market, but if you haven't been to farmer's market on Thursday, it's a wonder that somebody. You know, I'm, I still can walk pretty good, but getting across the street, it's crazy, crazy. So that would be something, and here's my last, how am I doing?
You're doing great.
So about 10, 12 years ago, I was talking to my husband and I said, I think I'm going to retire in 2020, which I did.
One minute.
Okay, one minute, thank you. I was going to retire in 2020. I said, you know what, Kevin, we need to think about this. When we retire, we need to move away because we don't have family here. And I do not want to grow old in a town that doesn't have a modern medical facility. Well, then we got a modern medicine facility and I was like, okay, we'll stay a little longer. Okay. Cause there's nothing that holds us here. But here's my point. The more, the more facilities and opportunities we have in Concordia, that will draw people to Concordia and it will keep people in Concordia. Because I'm checking off boxes going, well, maybe I'll stay a little longer. Okay. So thank you very much, but I'm all for the community activities.
First on the opposed list, we have Frank Hedrick.
My name is Frank Hedrick. I live at 708 East Fifth Street. I've lived here since 1985. I'm opposed to this facility simply because of cost is the main reason. $17 million for 7,000 people and there's at least 6% or above the age of 60. Putting it out where it's at, I don't see that many people traveling out there. I also see that it's going to have to be a 24 hour operation in order to work. I'm almost 75 years old. Currently I'm still fully employed. In order for me to use the facility, it would have to be before 6:00 AM or after 8:00, 8:00 PM in the evening. It's going to be a very, very high cost area as far as maintenance. Going to take several people to run it. I also believe that the city's position should be to support the community, help find viable business to come to town. As one mentioned, it shouldn't interfere with the other two fitness centers here in town, but I don't see how it cannot. They have membership fees that you have to pay. You haven't told us what the fees would be yet on that, but it's going to compete. The city has a lot more ability to compete against that. And that's one reason why we, we don't have some of the businesses that we should have. We don't need more, excuse me if I offend anybody, more hairdressers. Those types of things. We need a lot of different businesses, but we have to have housing in order to get people to move here. We have to have a livable wage. The poverty level in Concordia, Kansas is higher than any place else in the state. The poverty level in, uh, Concordia, Kansas is higher than any place else in the state. I don't see how we import another one percent sales tax. Uh, when they took away, uh, the state sales tax, everyone thought, well, there's no tax. And then they found out that there's one and a half percent of those places because there's one percent city and, and a half percent county. And so we're going to add another one and there's no guarantee that the Kansas, uh, sales tax is going to be gone on a permanent basis when it comes back. Will be among the highest in the state with the lowest wages. I don't, uh. I have a lot of other reasons why I, I don't think that it's feasible. Uh, but, uh, that's to come at a later time if this does indeed go forward. Thank you.
And next on the list, we have Jeremy Thrash.
I know I've got friends in here, people I care for, but I'm sure I will get. I am opposed for this, like Frank said, our poverty rate in this town is not good. And they are expecting to put a one percent sales tax on us, which I don't believe a lot of people are going to afford. Those that can't afford it are not going to utilize this facility. They're not going to be able to get to it, a lot of them don't have vehicles. I just don't understand why we can't help schools. Schools need facility updates, but yet all I'm hearing on this facility is pickleball, 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 and I know a lot of you played, I don't. I just don't feel we need a seventeen million dollar pickleball facility when we have buildings and town they can play in. I don't feel we need a seventeen million dollar facility when we have infrastructure that needs fixed in the city. We've got streets that are failing, we've got sewer systems that are failing, we've got water that's failing. We can't spend money on that, but we can on the seventeen million dollar facility. That is a lot of the reason I am against it and I will be voting no.
I'm Lucian Thrash.
We'll start, start over with the three minutes for you, that, like.
Okay, I'm Lucian Thrash, I live at four eighteen Third Avenue. And I'm not totally against the facility, I like the idea of a facility. But I want to know if it will host KESHA events. Because we have a gym in our high school that most handicapped people cannot sit. Most people cannot get up the steps and you have a place to step up to get on a place to sit. That is not feasible for most adults. And I just want to make sure that Concordia is spending the money where it's supposed to. We've already updated our schools and I know pickleball gets played at, it used to get played at the middle school. And then the college built pickleball courts. If there was just a little bit of money there, they could cover those pickleball courts and put in a heater, it would make it a lot cheaper. And the longer in the building a big facility. And the college has a place inside the walk. We have those places. I just want to make sure that our high school students, our junior high school students have a place to go. To play their KESHA sports if our gyms fail them. I wish the city and the school would come together and collaborate. And make a building that everybody can use. Not just a particular group. Then if we've got fees to get into this facility, our poor people aren't going to be able to pay for those. Who are we catering to? We have poor people. They can't always walk to those places. We have handicapped people that can't get to those places. We've got to be a community and come together for everybody, not just the people in this room. And that's all I've got to say.
That was the end of the speaker lists and I don't believe we have anybody on Zoom who had asked to speak. And if you have any commissioners, questions or comments at the end of the.
Is this going to have a, or is the proposed facility going to have? Courts that could be used for KESHA events, I don't know who that.
I'll, I'll take that one. So. The blueprint to build a grant that we're going after, um, requires us to start with a template facility. Yeah, but we've kind of talked about this, it's a little bit smaller than the one that we had originally looked at before the blueprint to build grant came into play. The facility is proposed with sport court flooring and it's proposed to be of a size that supports minimal seating. So it's more closely related to if you've been to this line of fieldhouse and you have smaller sized bleachers and caters more to rec or club programming. There are specific requirements for seating and floor surfacing that are required for KESHS facilities, KESHS sanctioned events. So if we proceed with this, um, grant and use this floor plan, it will not support KESHS sanctioned events for grades seven to twelve. They could still use the facilities for practice available, I know Chris talked about. Partnering with the school and college amenable for, uh, practice scheduling facilities, but it would not support those, uh, sanctioned competitions.
Not helping the school at all.
Won't say at all, but it can still support for practices, but it wouldn't support games and competitions.
That's not going to help when you have regitals and stuff to the house and a lot of people to come in.
So my, my hope then is that there's, uh, additional advocacy with the school, the school board. To move forward with facilities planning to support that. Uh, that was part of the conversation that we, uh, shared several years ago, a couple of years ago and, and looking to find some sort of partnership. Uh, and, and opportunity for, uh, some blended projects that the conversation stalled out. Uh, for a number of reasons and there continue to be advocacy, uh, most, uh, many members of the community, so, so the. There's been a lot of discussion about this primarily being a pickleball facility. Uh, I think that that's, um, there's certainly a lot of passion in that sport, but it is not the.
Seventeen million dollars worth?
I'm sorry, sir.
Seventeen million dollars worth?
So what I, what I was saying.
Listening, the seventeen million dollars worth.
It's not appropriate.
It's that it's not the only reason that this facility is being built, that there are many generations, uh, of people looking for. Uh, young kids to be able to come and play volleyball courts, basketball courts, walking tracks that have nothing to do with pickleball. The, the only real issue that, the reason that this, uh, keeps getting mentioned as pickleball specific is because of how passionate that organization is. But if you look at the footprint for this, it really is one of the, the smaller portions of this facility. This facility is, is really going to be geared towards addressing all activity levels throughout the entire year. Uh, of, of all of our citizens. So it's, it's, it's really a misnomer that it's about pickleball, they just happen to be one of the more passionate groups who are out talking the most and speaking the most. Uh, so I think as we, as we continue having this conversation and it is a conversation. Uh, that we really look at the entire scope of the project and not one very specific portion of. If you want to come to the podium and talk.
I have some new questions. Um, is there a way? That, I know you said that you had previously visited with the board of the school. Is there any way that the facility, where the volleyball and the basketball, those facilities could be made bigger? And collaborate with the school, do you think that would go over better?
I think that's an excellent question. I don't have an answer for that. But it's a great question to ask and it's one that warrants further conversation. At some point, there are timelines that we have to hit and if those conversations aren't able to come to some sort of meaningful. And then we, we still need to move forward with the schedule that we have, which is really, uh, looking at feasibility. And then at some point, whether we're going to put it to, th- this isn't a decision that the commissioners are going to make. The, the decision that we as a commission will make essentially is whether to propose this as a ballot measure. At which point the citizens of Concordia will decide, uh, that's the best way to move forward. So if there's opportunity for expansion of this project between now and then, I, I don't know that there's any of us that are opposed to that conversation. I think it's going to take a lot of work on the school's part to have a plan that would be, be ready in that timeline. Um, I'm, I'm opt, I'm always optimistic. But, but that's, that's sort of the timeline that we are working with in order to take advantage of the current grants. Uh, and again, the grant and, and the sales tax, um, you know, one of the. Those, those are all outside funding, that the grants are outside funding, the sales tax, um, for anybody that, that may, um. Have forgotten, the sales tax advantage in Concordia is because we have what's called a poll rate. And our poll rate means that for every amount of sales tax we generate, forty percent, alright, forty percent of that is generated outside of this community. And so the burden doesn't fall entirely on the residents of Concordia, yet we receive all the benefit of that. Uh, and so that's why this is a, is such an attractive funding mechanism for our community. Is because we have so many outside people conducting business in Concordia. And so it's another way to minimize the burden to our taxpayers as opposed to placing it all on them. And so that's what I think is so encouraging about the potential for this. It's really looking at how much of the funding we can outsource to residents, to people outside of Concordia, through, through grant, through the poll rate. Uh, and, and in private donation, so there, there's a lot of, of advantages to this, but ultimately it will be. A taxpayer decision.
I have one more question. Do you feel like KESHS sponsored events would bring in revenue every year to pay for that facility?
KESHS sponsored events do generate additional income when they come to town, whether that's with this specific facility or not. That's, that's something I can't answer. Right, but any, anytime, anytime a large sporting event comes to town, it generates.
It helps businesses and it would help that community center. And it would take some weight off of the community.
The, the scope of the project would also change significantly, so we're maybe looking at, at additional costs with that, which may have a. We, we'd have to run those numbers to see kind of the, the cost benefit analysis of whether the additional space required for that would justify the, the increase in cost to build it, but. But those are all, those are all great questions and they're all important things that we need to be looking.
Do you have the schematic for the gym and the volleyball courts?
I, I don't, specifically and kind of what I think Chris was alluding to earlier is that this is a, this is sort of a, um, the. The blueprint that we have now is something to get the conversation started. And as we secure grants, as we move forward with it, we'll be able to more find, uh, get into finer details of what the, the actual specifics are and how we can move pieces around to make it work best.
Are we able to get a copy of that schematic?
You have the, the one that's in the slideshow, it's available on a handout that we prepared for today. Okay, yeah, it, it's on the back, um, yeah, the, this being a brand new grant program, the. Hadry isn't able to release the drawings that we would need to give to our architect to be able to match those things together and get real detailed answers until the end of August, which doesn't. Fit well with the timeline required for this public hearing to put through other timelines for the other things that have to do next, so. Um, but yeah, we hope to have that soon if the commission decides to take the next step and the one more step forward.
Well, like I said, I'm not opposed to it, I just think there's a way to go about it that would make it pass. So I just wanted to bring my comments forward.
And the second problem is I missed the question and the discussion about, um, it was right for your, your last question here, were you asking about? What it would take to get the gyms to KESHS sanctioned events?
Yes, thank you.
I guess, um, and final comments, I would, I would like to stress the multi-generational aspect of what's proposed. And a lot of people like, uh, Commissioner Lambert said, had said, there's a lot of pickleball supporters here, but. There's a lot of stay-at-home moms in our community who have toddlers and small children that, um. Have a good deal of isolation if they have a place to go, especially in hot weather and cold weather. Um, beyond just the perks to, to get together and take their toddlers to play, that benefits their children and them. Um, we have, uh, I want to say at least sixty percent, uh, free and reduced lunch rate in Concordia, we spoke about, uh, or somebody. Made a comment about, um, the challenges of, of income in Concordia and with that being said. That the facility being located at Razor Field in between the elementary school and the middle school. Gives a lot of youth an opportunity to have somewhere to go after school. Um, and not just to play sports and it's not a place just for athletes, the, the purpose of it is multi-generational for everybody. Even those that are opposed to it, it's still for you too. Um, my last comment is that a few years ago, uh, Coach Bill Snyder, who was the former head football coach. Of Kate State came and spoke at the high school and if, if you've read his book or, uh. Were able to listen to his talk, a lot of his formative years as a youth, he lived, um, with a single mom in a. Oh, it was like a studio apartment, I don't, it might have been a one-bedroom apartment and he had a Murphy's bed and his mom slept on a cot. And he had the opportunity to go to a YMCA after school while his mom was at work. Um, and that formed a lot of his, I mean, of course, the character of his mom and his grandparents formed who he was. But having a place to go, a safe place to go after school, um, was informative for him, form, I guess, formative, um, for his future. Um, and then he had opportunity to participate in things he otherwise wouldn't have had the opportunity to do. We have a lot of kids in our community who have, uh, the good fortune to play travel sports and those things do cost money. But, uh, kids who currently, um, can't participate in those or aren't of age to play at the junior high and senior high levels. They don't necessarily have an indoor place to go play sports at, um, beyond that, um, other than, of course, the, this. Parks and Rec, uh, programs that are offered, it gives those kids an opportunity to participate in something. Um, that you don't have to try to get the school's gym to use, so this. Being multi-generational is, is for everyone here and we do very much appreciate all of you guys coming in and, and sharing your concerns. Uh, will, and also your support and we'll take all those into consideration with this and. Just to remind you that the sales tax, you know, nobody wants their taxes to go up, even those that are in favor. I'm sure that you're like, you know, I really don't want my taxes to go, it's not our taxes personally, but it is in our community. Um, so everyone outside of the community who comes here and shops will also be contributing to this. And hopefully our neighboring communities will utilize it as well and come, uh, participate, those in, in our county and surrounding areas. Maybe we had one request for a late speech, would you allow that or do we limit? Um, we could offer three minutes for. And honestly, as I was asking, you touched on something that I think is very important is. Like, there is a very, obviously, like, the pickleball community is very strong and they're very. Formed and that is something like they've done on their own. I work at the library and I have children's, I'm a cry, I don't, I'm so sorry. So I work at the library, Frank Carlson Library and I'm the children's team, I, I do show kids a lot. And I see the need tremendously and I think that that's, I see the moms coming. Do I talk a lot, buddy? I see the moms coming in that are looking for community and I see. The end of the summer, I saw something that I've not seen yet and I saw kids that are not library kids, like, we see library kids all the time. I saw non-library kids coming in like looking for something to do, like, kids that are, like. Have, have been in on the computers and that's what they do. They got bored and they started playing checkers and they started like, one came in, I don't know how to play my cola, can you, can we play my cola? And we have a gaga ball pit that like, if I have enough kids that want to play, they're like, can we please play the gaga ball pit? Which would be an option to, I, I could bring it to the, to, from the library, so I just. Like, I know that there is a big presence of pickleball here, but the rest of the people who would really benefit from it are not here because of this. Cause I braved this because my husband's at a meeting and I was like, you know, it's important for the kids. But nobody's, nobody's signing up to bring kids to a meeting, so I guess I'm the one that's here, like. It, it isn't just pickleball, just all the other people are not, not going to put everybody through a meeting with kids, so. Thank you for letting me speak late, I'm sorry that, it was like.
We have a question on Zoom. I think they just want to know if this is set in stone, this location.
We did, so we, we did hire, uh, Jones Gilamren's architects through a grant from the community foundation to evaluate two sites that were already so young. We evaluated City Park and Razor Field and, uh, along with the scope of program of spaces that we've been talking about since twenty twenty-two. And the commission met, I believe it was in, uh, December and May of last year to kind of look at those, those things and then selected Razor Field as the site.
Just as groundwork was one of the main reasons too, between the two sites, the City Park and Razor Field, there's what, roughly a four million dollar difference? Just for site prep work, uh, which led us to the Ranger over City. just for site prep work, uh, which led us to the Ranger over City Park as a better option.
With that, uh, the, the public hearing is now closed. The commission will consider all comments as part of its discussion for action in future meetings. We appreciate you all coming this evening. Thank you.
Make a motion for a jury.
Yeah.
Yeah.